Bill 102-33 from the third reading file to the second reading file. I understand that Senators Blas and Espaldan have drafted an amendment which is beyond a technical amendment and that the amendment has been pre-approved by yourself, so I make this motion very comfortably and willingly.
Hearing, no objection.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. And, Mrs. Speaker, I want to thank you, you know, during the break, being able to communicate and discuss with you. Possibility of being able to allay some of the concerns that I had with certain language that Senator Espaldan and I had with certain provision in the bill that we felt was necessary to be addressed so that we can make sure that it, you know, that businesses have the opportunity to be able to, for lack of a better word, get into, come into compliance with the mandates, if you will, that would be occurring as a result if this legislation were to pass, be passed into law. And so what this will provide is in the bill, and if, on page two, actually, it's under, yeah, it's section 5201, section C, subsection C, is at the end of subsection C would add the words, "All employers or employment agencies shall have up to six months to modify personal forms and policies to come into compliance with the changes to the Guam Code contained in this act." This will provide these businesses and the entities, again, the 180 days, so that, you know, right now, they surely have, you know, literature, documents, applications, forms, handbooks that are already printed, pre-printed already, giving them six months to be able to make those necessary adjustments so that it can be in compliance with this act. So therefore, that language is being proffered to be provided in subsection C.
Thank you very much, Senator. Any Senator wish to be heard on the amendment?
If I can, I did say 180 days. Yes, I did.
On the 180 day, on the amendment with the 180 days in it, anyone wish to speak on Senator Torres.
I'm just wondering if it's absolutely clear what the cutoff is. Does it trigger upon enactment of the bill?
Yes.
Does it trigger, does that need to be spelled out or no? Because there's going to be a date when it doesn't? Okay. Just point of clarification, thank you.
And I appreciate the concern and the point of clarification. It is actually, the 180 starts upon the enactment of this. That was the concern and the intent.
Any Senator wish, other Senator wish to be heard? Any objection?
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, then I think a proper motion is to move 102 back down to the third.
On the motion to send 102 back into the voting file. No objection?
Oh, well.
Oh, okay. I guess. We'll take a very short recess. (laughter) Back in session. We're in the voting file. And clerk, I believe, Bill 102. Oh, resolution 111-33, and the clerk will read the title.
Resolution number 111-33 COR, as substituted by the primary sponsor, introduced by Frank B. Uggan Jr., TC Ada, and Tommy Morrison, relative to respectfully requesting for the Honorable Robert A. McDonough, United States Secretary of Veterans Affairs, to call for the Veterans Health Administration to conduct a system-wide audit of the scheduling and assess management practices at the Guam community-based outpatient clinic, and to assess the integrity of these practices, and if necessary, provide recommendations to improve services to Guam's veterans.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldan.
Yes.
Senator Espaldan, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye.
Senator Rispisho.
Senator Rispisho, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, aye.
Senator Siniklis.
Senator Siniklis, aye.
Senator Torres.
Senator Torres, aye.
Senator Underwood.
Senator Underwood, aye.
Speaker Wampat.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Resolution number 113-33 COR, received 15 aye votes. Resolution 111-33 has been duly passed by the Guam Legislature. Bill 102-33.
Bill number 102-33 COR, as corrected by the prime sponsor and amended on the floor, introduced by BJ F. Cruz, Mary Camacho Torres, MB Underwood, Ph.D., TR Munia Barnes, and act to amend subsections A, B, C, and D of section 5201, and add new subsections H, I, and J to section 5202 of Article II, Chapter 5, Title 22, Guam Code Annotated, and to amend subsection A of section 4101 of Article I, Chapter 4, Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, relative to prohibiting discrimination in the workplace, and to cite this act as the Guam Employment Non-Discrimination Act, Agenda 2015.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Senator Tom Ada, aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Senator Tony Ada, aye.
Senator Uggan.
Senator Uggan, aye.
Senator Blas.
Senator Blas, aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldan.
Senator Espaldan, aye.
Senator McCready.
Senator McCready, aye.
Senator Morrison.
Senator Morrison, aye.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye.
Senator Rispisho.
Senator Rispisho, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, aye.
Senator Siniklis.
Senator Siniklis, aye.
Senator Torres.
Senator Torres, aye.
Senator Underwood.
Senator Underwood, aye.
Speaker Wampat.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill 102-33, received 15 aye votes. Bill 102 is duly passed by the 33rd Guam Legislature. Bill 104-33.
Bill number 104-33 LS, as amended on the floor, introduced by Frank F. Blas Jr., James V. Espaldan, and act to repeal chapter 22 of Title 19, Guam Code Annotated, and repeal section 3120 of Article I, Chapter 3 of Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, and to add a new Article III to Division 1, Chapter 1 of Title 22, Guam Code Annotated, relative to placing the Agency for Human Resource Development under the administrative supervision of the Guam Department of Labor.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Senator Uggan, aye.
Senator Blas.
Senator Blas, aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldan.
Senator Espaldan, aye.
Senator McCready.
Senator McCready, aye.
Senator Morrison.
Senator Morrison, aye.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye.
Senator Rispisho.
Senator Rispisho, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, aye.
Senator Siniklis.
Senator Siniklis, aye.
Senator Torres.
Senator Torres, aye.
Senator Underwood.
Senator Underwood, aye.
Speaker Wampat.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill 104-33, received 15 aye votes. Bill 104-33 has been duly passed by Imena Tantaites Leyes de Tuenguahan. Bill 105-33.
Bill number 105-33 LS, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication and amended on the floor, introduced by Tommy Morrison, TR Munia Barnes, V. Anthony Ada, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., RJ Rispisho, Michael F. Q. Siniklis, and act to amend section 5204D of Article II, Chapter 5, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to supporting the development of safe and healthy youth and community activities by appropriating funds from the Limited Gaming Fund for fiscal year 2015 and annually thereafter to the Mayor's Council of Guam, the Department of Education, and the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Senator Uggan, aye.
Senator Blas.
Senator Blas, aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldan.
Senator Espaldan, aye.
Senator McCready.
Senator McCready, aye.
Senator Morrison.
Senator Morrison, aye.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye.
Senator Rispisho.
Senator Rispisho, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, aye.
Senator Siniklis.
Senator Siniklis, aye.
Senator Torres.
Senator Torres, aye.
Senator Underwood.
Senator Underwood, aye.
Speaker Wampat.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill 105-33 has been passed by Imena Tantaites Leyes de Tuenguahan. Bill 116-33.
Bill number 116-33 COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., and act to amend section 6 of Public Law 31-239, and to authorize the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center to fully implement its fee schedule and the provisions of section 8611 FGNH of Chapter 86, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services Fund.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Senator Uggan, aye.
Senator Blas.
Senator Blas, aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldan.
Senator Espaldan, aye.
Senator McCready.
Senator McCready, aye.
Senator Morrison.
Senator Morrison, aye.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye.
Senator Rispisho.
Senator Rispisho, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, aye.
Senator Siniklis.
Senator Siniklis, aye.
Senator Torres.
Senator Torres, aye.
Senator Underwood.
Senator Underwood, aye.
Speaker Wampat.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill 116-33, received 15 aye votes. Bill 116-33 has been duly passed by Imena Tantaites Leyes de Tuenguahan. Bill 119-33.
Bill number 119-33 COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by MB Underwood, Ph.D., and act to amend subsections H and I of section 3207 of Article II, Chapter 3 of Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, and to amend sections 3102, 3105, 3108, 3202, A7, 3204, and 3206, and repeal section 3109, all of Chapter 3, Title 19, Guam Code Annotated, relative to providing equal protection for all families on Guam by creating equality in civil marriage.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Senator Uggan, aye.
Senator Blas.
Senator Blas, aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldan.
Senator Espaldan, aye.
Senator McCready.
Senator McCready, aye.
Senator Morrison.
Senator Morrison, aye.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye.
Senator Rispisho.
Senator Rispisho, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, aye.
Senator Siniklis.
Senator Siniklis, aye.
Senator Torres.
Senator Torres, aye.
Senator Underwood.
Senator Underwood, aye.
Speaker Wampat.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Senator Uggan.
Senator Uggan, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, aye.
Senator Siniklis.
Senator Siniklis, aye.
Senator Torres.
Senator Torres, aye.
Senator Uggan, nay.
Bill 119-33, received 13 ayes, 2 nays. Bill 119-33 has been duly passed by Imena Tantaites Leyes de Tuenguahan. On the voting file for the nominations. On the nomination of Lucy Alcorn to serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority, a show of hands. All those in favor, please raise your... Ms. Alcorn has received unanimous votes of the legislature. Her nomination has been confirmed. On the nomination of Joseph I. Cruz to serve as Chief of Police of the Guam Police Department, roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Senator Uggan, aye.
Senator Blas.
Senator Blas, aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldan.
Senator Espaldan, aye.
Senator McCready.
Senator McCready, aye.
Senator Morrison.
Senator Morrison, aye.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye.
Senator Rispisho.
Senator Rispisho, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, aye.
Senator Siniklis.
Senator Siniklis, aye.
Senator Torres.
Senator Torres, aye.
Senator Underwood.
Senator Underwood, aye.
Speaker Wampat.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
The nomination of Joseph I. Cruz to serve as Chief of Police of the Guam Police Department has received 15 aye votes. Chief Cruz has received the unanimous consent of the Imena Tantaites Leyes de Tuenguahan. of the Iminitantaites Leyes de Tuangwahan. His confirmation is approved. On the nomination of April L. Flores to serve as a member of the Guam Educational Telecommunications Corporations, KGTF PBS Board of Trustees. Show of hands. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Flores has received the unanimous votes of the Iminitantaites Leyes de Tuangwahan. On the nomination of Martin J. Gerber to serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Airport Board of Authority. Show of hands. All those in favor, please indicate so. Unanimous approval by the 33rd Guam Legislature. On the nomination of Janine P. Guevara to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Show of hands. All those in favor. Unanimous for the confirmation of Janine Guevara to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission. On the nomination, Matthew L. G. Sablon to serve as director of the Department of Agriculture. Roll call.
Senator Tom Attah. Senator Tom Attah, aye. Senator Tony Attah. Senator Tony Attah, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye.
On the nomination, Matthew L. G. Sablon to serve as director of the Department of Agriculture. He has received 15 aye votes. Unanimous for this confirmation. Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we adjourn this session subject to the call of the chair.
Hearing, no objection.